This conference will now be recorded.
Again, good morning. This is an awesome turnout. I wish we had this meeting at one of our board meetings, but that's okay. Maybe one day we will. Today, we are having a town hall meeting, and this is strictly for the matter at hand, which is the retention slash removal of one of the members of the board, which is Roberta Ernest. What we will be doing is we will have both parties present their side. Once that is done, we will open it up for questions and comments. Each person that speaks has two minutes, and we will keep it timed because of the amount of people involved. If at any time it starts to get out of hand, I will tell you I will stop the meeting. So let's all try and be professional as we go along this one. I'm sorry. I'm Darlene Pedro. I'm the general manager for the community. For some of you that don't know, that are just coming in, I'm sorry. So again, each party will present their case, and then we'll go from there. Okay? Any questions before I have them get started?
Hi, I'm Sharon O'Leary, 602. Each new board member signs a code of conduct which states, "No board member shall interfere with the system of management, and no board member shall interfere with the duties of any staff member of HTC-A. Each board member liaisons with a different department to represent its needs to the board." The purpose of the Happy Trails Board is to listen to recommendations from our committees and to petitions from our residents and make decisions based on the information they are presented. Management and employees are the purview of HTC-A management, not the board. Board member Ernest is the subject of a recall petition. One, when she wrote a code of conduct for the Happy Trails employees. Two, when she asked for information from offices where she is not the liaison. Three, when she met privately with three other board members. Four, when her application indicated she lived in Happy Trails 12 months of the year, but apparently she does not. We feel that there are too many violations to keep her on the board.
Thank you, Sharon. Let's see, where's it? Roberta? Thank you. I have many notes. First of all, let me thank all of you for coming out here. I am Roberta Ernest, lot 712, currently a board member at Happy Trails, voted in by the majority of you. For those that support me, I thank you for coming out and hearing their side. For those of you that are on the fence, I'm glad you're here so that you can hear both sides. And for those of you that support the other side, I'm glad you're here because I want you to base an informed decision on what actually has happened. I get it, they're your friends, and you want to believe them. But I'm asking you to really look hard into your heart and your soul and make an informed decision, because when you vote, it is a secret ballot, and by then, it's none of their business how you voted. So if you're worried about your friendship with them, you don't have to be. You need to vote with your gut and your heart after hearing what's been said. So let's talk about this code of conduct situation. And you can put it up on the screen, Dave. But the accusations, as I hear right now, is code of conduct for employees. I never wrote a code of conduct for employees. We had a gathering of three of us that were together on a employee handbook that is the rights and requirements of the Board of Directors. It has not been taken out into the public that hasn't even been really discussed with the entire board. It's still being reviewed and reviewed by management. That's not a code of conduct. That's an employee handbook that talks about requirements for the job, policies for the job, possibly PTO, pay time off. That's what that was about. Office, meeting with office members. I've never interfered with any of the office staff, so I'm not quite sure. That's not very specific. What exactly did I do? Did I go in and talk with Thelma about things? Sure. Everybody on the board, everybody in this association goes and talks to Thelma about activities. Have I talked with patrol? Yes, because I am the liaison with the Safety Committee, and there was a time when myself and George and Captain Nelson met to kind of talk about how can we stop people to stop at stop signs and speeding? Yes, so there was a little gathering of that. Privately met in a quorum. That's that meeting that they're talking about, which I'm going to elaborate on that a little bit. Three of us for an hour and a half, a fourth member for 20 minutes, talking about grammar, sentence structure, does this read properly? Does this make sense? Is this good for the employees? Good for the association? Okay, break. I'm going to package all those notes up, rewrite it, and send it to the board. And let me just emphasize this, since they, as previous board members ought to know, you can't just recall one person for that. That means you need to recall the other three members that were in attendance on that meeting. And that's law, people. Otherwise, it's discrimination. Live in Happy Trails 12 months. Let's talk about that application. It actually says approximately 12 months of the year, and that's what I filled out back in December of 2021. Because at the time, we were at the end of COVID, we weren't traveling much, and we were on the property on a regular basis. The interesting part about that is that when I ran for the board and we had the meet the candidates, I informed all the owners. My husband and I bought a house in Sun City Festival. It's 13 miles away. We are on this property all the time, to include sleeping over on a regular basis. I'm still looking for an Arizona room that's livable, but I didn't want to pay high prices. So no, that hasn't happened yet, and I'm still looking. You can ask Surprise Realty. I'm in there all the time. But that does not address the issue. By law, it's a funky little Arizona state statute that says, if you own in an HOA, you don't have to live on the property that you own and still be on the board. That means I can actually live in the state of Minnesota, never step foot in the state of Arizona, and if I get enough votes, I can still be on the Board of Directors. And funny enough, I was still voted in on the Board of Directors when the owners knew that we had a house 13 miles away and that I am always on this property. And now I'm even on the property even more than I was. I thought it was a lot back then because of board meetings, executive meetings, committee meetings that we attend, social events and gatherings such as Happy Trails banquets, all of that, and social gatherings with people. And we prefer to stay the night rather than driving 13 miles in the dark on Sun Valley Parkway. So I am here all the time. So code of conduct, what exactly is it that I broke on the code of conduct? I didn't interfere with any employees. This group has been riled up since October, when there was a change in management, and that's what they've stemmed all this on, is the management change. And that was an agreed-upon decision between HomeCo and the Board of Directors, and it did not happen overnight, people. It was lengthy discussions about how does this impact the association? How does this impact the previous community manager? How does it impact the board? Is it good for what we need to do to move on? And is it good for the previous community manager? And it was agreed by HomeCo and the seven board members that yes, it was. I am one of seven votes. I can't get anything done unless there's at least three or four other people that are going to do it the same way. We come to a meeting, we express our opinions, we ask each other about our opinions to get a better understanding where the other person is coming from, and then we make an informed decision on what's best for the association to go forward. That's how it works. And if, how many of you people in here know Steve Deal? Just raise your hand. How many of you know Steve Deal? Do you really think that I could ramrod Steve Deal? That I could run roughshod over Steve Deal? Or Barb? Or Marie? Or Becca? Or Ron Howard, who is also a retired Air Force veteran? And Marilyn? God love you. You're our doctor of psychology, so she's picking us apart all the time. Nobody can run roughshod over that either. It is a group of people that have truly been working together to better this association. This small contingent group of people that are after me have been after me from the get-go. This code of conduct is nebulous. It's really great to throw code of conduct violation when you don't have anything specific to point to. It muddies the water of truth. Code of conduct, there they are. No soliciting, accepting of gifts? Nope, haven't done that. Shall not accept favors or gifts for intent of influencing decisions or actions on, nope, haven't done that. We've certainly not made any political contributions. We haven't been paid, I promise you. Shall engage in, there you go. No board member shall engage in writing, speech-making that defames any other board member or resident of Happy Trails. I want you to keep that in your memory buckets for a minute. No board member shall willingly, knowingly misrepresent the facts in order to place pressure on the board to achieve a personal agenda. Haven't done that. Any board member under investigation, we know that. Not, not me. Next slide. Board members will soon be vested in the authority and to direct a member or cannot direct an employee of the association. Authority of the board is limited to one vote. That's correct, one vote. No board member shall interfere with the system of management. Have not. They need to be a little more specific if they think I've interfered, because what they're telling you is they think I interfered because they think I'm solely responsible for the previous community manager being reassigned, and that's not true. And she's still working. She was not fired. Still working with HomeCo. Doesn't interfere with the HTC staff. I do not. Keeps all confidential of all board members' personal lives, all owners and the employees. Absolutely. Conducts themselves publicly and privately in a respectful manner to other board members. Absolutely. Supports the vote of the majority of the board. Absolutely. And is loyal to the association and conforms to the association's policies. Absolutely. Now, when I signed the code of conduct, I truly believe that that code of conduct, after serving on the board, follows me when I come off the board. There's no expiration date on it. No one signs a non-disclosure agreement when they leave the board. So I have to ask Mike Rudland, Bill Rhodes, Sharon O'Leary, as former board members, and Vicky Griffiths, how many of these code of conducts have you violated yourself in this process of steering this all up? There are many accusations out there. Many. Too many for me to just completely comment on them right now. So if you have questions, I ask you to please ask those accusations that you've heard, because they have changed from October until they finally got their signatures in December Every time it didn't work on that accusation, they moved to a different one. It's been a moving amoeba, constantly flowing. They've been aggressive to even push the petition in people's faces and say, "You need to sign this anyways." If they had something solid, they wouldn't have to do that, but they don't have anything solid. And yes, I hate to say, yeah, they're out to get me. I'm a strong woman, that's evident, but that's why some of you voted me on the board. And I'm sorry, that's 36 years of being in the military and working my way through the And no, just because I'm prior military doesn't mean I want to be in charge. We are all leaders, and we are all followers. Most of us, most of the time, are all followers, and we lead when we have to. But I really resent people saying, "She's prior military. She can't be on the, she shouldn't be up there." We allow prior military, Ron Woodward, 22 years of service for his country. Are you telling me in this day and age that it's okay for men to be prior military and not women? Ladies, are you really believing and buying into that? So I'm going to cut it short. I welcome your questions as difficult as you want to make them, because I can take them. So please, any questions?
Before we open up for some questions, I'm going to read this off regarding the special meeting that will be held. As a result of the petition submitted to the association on January 9, 2023, the association on behalf of the members has called a special meeting to vote on the issue of removing the current director, Roberta Ernest, from the Board of Directors. Attached, please find the ballot to vote on retention or removal of the director. Please return your ballot to Happy Trails Community Association, 17200 West Bell Road, no later than 12:00 PM on February 8, 2023. The ballots may be personally delivered to the HTC-A front office. After the ballots are counted, the results will be read in the special meeting to be held on February 8, 2023 at 2:00 PM in the courtyard. We did have a scheduling error with our show that is on that 8th, so it will be held in the courtyard. Seating will be arranged for the residents. So please, please come to that special meeting. Ballots will be mailed today. For professional sake, we're going to keep it down to two minutes per question, and please raise your hand. Bradley will be running around with a microphone, and then we will try to get through any, all the questions that we have present here in the room. Thank you.
All right. Well, this is not really much of a question, but sort of. My name's
I'll be recorded.
23. As I have read the
As I have read
And also looked at
And also looked at
33 And then I've also read
And then I've also read the
Rules in the
Rules in the
Bylaws.
Rules in the
Bylaws. You had a, you had some type of meeting
Had a meeting, gathering
Three other members and then
Three members and then another
Correct? Anytime, I would think
Anytime, I would think, anytime
Together, I don't care if it's
Together, I don't care
Three members, they even
Post it?
Post it? As a meeting?
As a meeting. That way, they never
You had a fourth minute to come
You had a fourth minute to come in.
In here, it says. And I don't know really, I don't know if it was a special meeting or what it was considered, but only the president or the secretary can actually call a special meeting. As far as quorum, you did make a quorum. So you violated a law. Not only did you violate these, but you violated Arizona revised statutes. So this is nothing about me liking you or not liking you. I went with what I know, and you broke the law. If we continue to allow that to keep happening for everybody, and do I think the other board members should have been on there? Yes, I do. The other three and possibly, because there was only three others there, I do think that they should have been included in the recall beside you. I have a lot more to say. I do have a copy of the code of conduct, and I do see that you have. And Roberta, it's nothing against you, it's the violation, violation. I have been working under Arizona revised statutes for a long time, and I have had to report to the Attorney General for any issue that may have come up. Unfortunately, here, the HOA, you kind of, kind of have to police yourselves. So again, I would really expect the board to have more knowledge as they say they do. So let's address that. So it was a workshop. It was strictly a workshop of three people working together. What? I didn't call it. I did ask to have the man's Anita room. We were asked to work on policies. So we got together and worked on policies and expanded into the employee handbook. It was strictly about grammar, structure. How does this work? The fourth person walked in, gave us their inputs, and then we broke. Now, open law, open meeting rule, state statute, absolutely. What most of people don't realize is that actually applies primarily to the mayor's office, the government-type city, what am I, government offices and that. The homeowners associations and the planned community regulation state statute do follow it for a purpose, because they don't want the Board of Directors or majority to have regular meetings without the owners being present. That makes total sense. Where it becomes a problem is not one instance that happened that was well explained in October. It becomes a problem when it continuously happens for board members meeting and making decisions on the rule of what the association is going to follow. That's when it becomes a problem. So in fact, HomeCo attorney said, "No attorney would address this 20-minute violation, because it's not an issue, especially since you weren't making decisions on behalf of the owners." It was strictly a workshop. That's it. It was explained in October. I can't tell you anything more than that. That's it.
Steve Funk on lot 1282. I understand this idea of a workshop with three people working to create a handbook for the employees. They're kind of doing the job of the Board of Directors, what we elected them to do. That's kind of what I'm hearing being said here. And we have a fourth person that walked into the meeting. It seems to me that the fourth person created a quorum. The fourth person should have turned around and walked out. Were you the fourth person? Okay.
Sorry, no, I was not.
So how is Roberta, the one person of the four people that were there, the one that broke the rules, but the other did not? We have a problem here at Happy Trails. We have a problem at Happy Trails with so many things, where one person's lot is okay and somebody else's is not. There is not consistency in all of the rules at Happy Trails, this being one of them. Come on, people. How can you take someone off the board that did exactly the same thing as three other board members? That's silly, and we have to be better than that. I also want to ask the question, what is this costing us at Happy Trails to have someone taken off of the board? I can only imagine that we have to mail it out, we have to start a whole new election process. It's going to be, I don't know how much, but I know it's going to be in the thousands of dollars, and we have a person here that's really only on the board for one more year. Oh, anyway, thank you.
In answer to your question as far as costs goes, as of today In answer to your question regarding costs, as of today, time-wise with management and cost to mail the ballots and stuff, we're at a little over $4,000. So if I could elaborate on that, because I want to address your situation, first answer to your one question or statement is actually legally, all four members should be on the recall, not one. Okay? That's discrimination. I don't support that at all, because we really did not violate anything. I'm sorry, people, we made absolutely no decisions. It was all in the betterment for our employees and for the association. Number two, costs. The previous community manager and I did a little workshop together last year to kind of figure out how much does it cost to run just the annual election for board members? The cost with materials, mail-out, printing, stamps, envelopes, time with staff was approximately $3,500, just for that. Now you just heard, just on me alone on this recall, it's $4,000 approximately, and it's going to get a little more than that by the time we get done. And then, if I'm actually voted off the board, guess what? There's a separate, another election for my single seat. That's a minimum of another $3,500. You can do the math, just on me, $7,500 if they succeed. So I'm asking that you vote no.
Onrad Revenig, 1150. I 100% support Roberta Ernst.
Bob Carl, 2254. Other than the accusation of the three board members getting together and having whatever they did, and then another person shows up, what are they, other accusations? What else did you do? Must be more than that.
Well, the first one that I heard was brandished a weapon. How many heard that when they were told about petitions? Brandished a weapon. Brandishing a weapon means taking out your weapon and waving it around with the intent of intimidating somebody. I've never brandished a weapon. I'm a world champion and a national champion in cowboy action shooting for 2022. I have handled weapons all my life, primarily guns. I have handled and used guns in the Air Force. I know the safety, I know the danger. I'm well-expertized on guns. I never brandished, and they have never been able to substantiate where I supposedly brandished this weapon. And because that one didn't work, then they roll to the next one. There's many of them, so I'll give you guys an opportunity to ask what you've heard out there.
Hello? My name is Rick Comfort, 1456. The first lady that spoke, maybe she could give us an example of what you did? I mean, there's got to be a specific thing, or, yes, no, the blonde lady.
I'm a blonde.
Whoever. Anyway, I'd just like to hear a specific for what's being accused.
I read our statement. There were, I've heard lots of rumors. That was not part of anything that we were saying, so I would just like to say I'm not going to stand up here and discuss every rumor that you've heard in Happy Trails, because we have been listening to rumors ever since I've lived here about anything in Happy Trails.
You want me to go? Don Mosher, 476. I heard that rumor about the brandishing from Sharon. I, I heard. She asked me because I am a member of the Gun Club, and so I was there while her and her husband were giving a demonstration on their shooting techniques out at Ben Avery. Very professional operation, by the way, and I considered the two And I consider the two of them extremely professional gun handlers. There was no brandishing. I was at the meeting, there was no brandishing. Also, also. Also, there was a rumor about the same meeting about something about a, an undergarment, let's just say that. And, and I was there, I did not see anything like that. It was, everything I heard was fake. Also, today I am hearing the charges against her, and I haven't heard anything that would make me think she should be removed from the board. I haven't heard a thing. I think we ought to give the woman a medal, and I think we should have more people like that because she's a very strong woman. I like that.
I do want to clarify one thing. I do want to clarify one thing. When I heard the rumor, I went to a source who I knew was involved in the gun club, asked if it was true. He said no, and I never said anything else about it. So he is the only one that I had a conversation with, and two other gun club members that I know. I simply asked if it was true, they said no, that was the end of it. So if you're laughing because he got me, he didn't get me, he said exactly what happened. I asked the question, he answered it, that was the end of it.
This is John Chilcote, and I'd like to say about three things. First of all, I would ask that you, Rebecca.
Roberta.
Roberta, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Roberta would forgive me because I made a bad decision based on the belief that anyone who lives outside of the, of the Happy Trails community shouldn't be on the board. So I stand corrected. The rest of the rumors I haven't heard, or other considerations I haven't heard. So what I'm talking about here right now is lives, two lives. So I'd like to, the other two things I want to point out are two lives. There's your life, Roberta, and the life of this community. Now, you know, wisdom was associated with Solomon. He, he had to make a decision about a baby, you remember? And there was two women who were arguing over this baby and the life of this baby. One wanted the baby because she wanted it for herself, and the other one wanted the baby because she was the natural mother and was, and was caring about that baby's life. And so I think the decisions that we make today need to be considered from that point of view. Are we making decisions based on our principles and our wants? Are we considering what the answer or the decisions that we make are going to do to two lives? To Roberta's life and her reputation, or, and to the community of Happy Trails, which is a life. And we can damage this community. We can cut this community right in half like Solomon was proposing to do to that baby. So I think we should stand up and say, no, let's choose life.
Thank you. And it is based on your vote. So please, remember, you're on the fence and you make an informed decision, and I appreciate you thanking that. I did have several members come to me after they had signed the petition and went and got some information from other board members, other people, and came back and sincerely apologized, which I accepted. And they were sorry they signed the petition. All I can tell you is now how you vote.
Dave Kellheffer, 2312. If the petition is not withdrawn, what is the vote number that is an affirmative for the petition?
Okay, so what happens from this point forward if the petition is not withdrawn? We have the meeting held on February 8th. At that meeting, we will count the, we have to have a quorum. A quorum for this size of community is 401 votes. That means ballots turned in. Right. I'm talking about the recall, yeah, that's okay. If, for an example, if we have 600, then the quorum, the quorum stays the same, it's 401, but if we have 600 votes, a majority of those votes have to be either yes or no, so the majority wins. Again, like what was said earlier, if it passes and she is removed from the board, then we would have to have another special election to fill that board position. Does that make sense?
I'm Betty Hall, lot 2308. I highly recommend that this petition be dropped. This is. This is something that is going to, like the other gentleman said, tear this place apart, and it's not only going to do that, it's going to last for a long time. Something like this can get out to people who are looking to come here and live here because of its friendly reputation and how things work together, all the clubs that are going on. And this is going to get out, and it's going to cause people to look elsewhere. This is one of the best boards that we've had in a long time. They have really picked up and moved forward and are trying to really improve this resort. So many years previous to this, we've had boards that just kind of kicked the can down the road. And now they are looking to really improve our place and keep it more updated, which needs even more work, but it takes time and it takes money. And we're going to spend, what, how much money, how many thousands of dollars for something like this? It just doesn't make sense. We need to get together and make this a happy place and be welcoming to these people that come in and see us.
I'm Carol Butler, lot 1095. I have two points, three points. Anyone who serves on our Board of Directors should live here. You need to walk a mile in our moccasins to know how they feel, number one. Roberta, I hope you can find a place here that you really, really like, and then I hope that you sell your current home and come live amongst us all the time, not just on the pickleball court. Okay? Number two, I think it is insulting to our past Board of Directors to say that this is the best one we ever had. I've lived here 21 years, seen a lot of boards, a lot of the members, and there are many past board members who are extremely ethical, kind, knowledgeable people, and it's insulting to them to say that this is the best. Because my guess is that a great many of you were not here then, and you don't know. Number three. Number three, if Roberta is removed, I have no dog in this fight, understand? If Roberta is removed, there is no election. The bylaws state that someone filling her position will be decided upon by the board members, not us. Okay? Those are the three things I wanted to make a point about.
So I can, I'm going to address two of those, but Ms. Darlene's going to address that specific one. Okay. In answer to your number three, I don't know where she went. It does have to go out to a vote of the membership, and the reason why is because she's recalled. If a board member were to step down on their own accord, then that's when the board would be able to appoint a new board member. And to answer your other question, I know that you feel that I have to live here. I do live here. I walk in your shoes every day, and I've been walking in them pretty hard since October when this all started. And actually, by law, you can't require that. We can't even make a rule in the CCNRs that says you have to live here because the state statute supersedes and overrides the CCNRs.
I'm Bill Powell, I'm lot 440, and I'm chairman of the Budget Committee. Roberta is not, not our liaison, however, she attends nearly every single budget meeting, sits in the back quietly, takes notes, does not speak unless she's approached. I occasionally will poll those who sit there for a budget thought, and she will give me a thoughtful answer at that time. She's been an excellent person there. Full disclosure, Happy Trails is not my residence. I live 1,800 miles from here in Wisconsin. I come down here periodically. I'll come down in October or November. I leave in March or April. Two years ago, I didn't come at all. I make less than 50% of the Budget Committee meetings in person. The rest I do virtually. Roberta makes all of them in person. So just want you to know that that's not a rule, and many of us follow it. I did have a meeting recently where we ended the Budget Committee meeting, and we needed to make a decision, or a couple of thoughts on how to do a spreadsheet. How do you do an Excel spreadsheet to come up with an answer we needed? The quorum for the Budget Committee right now is three. Three of us sat down, started to talk about the mechanics of a spreadsheet. Roberta was the very first one to barge up from the back of the room and said, you can't do this, break up now. And we broke up, and two of us put the spreadsheet together. So anyways, she's very ethical in what she's doing here, very much in tune with it. We all sit down and do things that just need a little attention. Thank you.
Hello? I have a question for Darlene. Marketa McLean, lot 1390. I had a question about the ballots, so if they go out to the entire residence. I understand that if the ballots are not returned, not mailed back or turned in, that they count as a no vote. Is that accurate?
No, that's not accurate. All votes that come in are counted, whether it's a yes or a no. So, and that's to meet quorum. Again, we have to have 401 ballots returned.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Steve Brand, lot 338. Oh, one of the things I want to say, I have the mic, but, one of the things, we're all concerned about this kind of stuff, really? I'm more concerned not been finished. I've got things sitting. We got things sitting up on the roof that's been there since the summertime. We had the cascade bathrooms, which were supposed to be done over the summertime, were never finished until just before the tournament got started. We had to go somewhere else to go to the bathroom, okay? And the money we spent on that. And we're concerned about that. That's my concern, okay? I have a question for the gal, Sherry, the, Sharon? Cheryl, okay? You were asked what the charges were. You were asked again. You came up and gave us some nonsense answer of, I'm not going to answer your question because I just don't have time to go into all this, right? That's what I heard. I'll give you another chance to answer the question. What are you charging her with?
I do want to make, something I did forget to tell you all is that we wouldn't be here right now if it wasn't for something else that happened. The question was, how do I get to defend myself? And the attorneys, I think, or HomeCo management came down and said, each side can put in a letter with the ballot stating their side, their position, them and mine. And I told Ms. Darlene, I said, great, I've got one already topped up, I'm ready to go. She said, well, I gotta wait and get confirmation from them. She called me the next day and said they declined to put a letter in with the ballot, which I'm sorry signifies to me they didn't have anything they could put in writing, or better yet, because the things that they do have are defamation of character, and they didn't want them written down. So because that happened, we now have a town hall meeting. So I should probably say thank you that you didn't have the letter, because now I can talk to a much larger group of people to express my side and, and what has truly happened.
I'm Frank Collin, I'm 15, 13 months. I've only been here a little while, so I'm not real informed on what, on what the rules are, but I'd like to know where this brandishing claim came from. Was it at the gun club or, and in my own personal interest, what are the laws or policies about having a gun on Happy Trails? And last but not least, do you think that you, if you were kept on the board, can you work with the board and can the board work with you?
So I don't know where the brandishing came from. I really and truly don't. And if you've been here at Happy Trails, I mean, I support Sharon on that, you never know where those rumors come from. I don't know who started it, I don't know how it got started or why. The rules at Happy Trails on guns, this is an open carry state. Okay? Now, the thing is though, we do have in our CCNRs, section 11.15, 1115, that states firearms cannot be visibly displayed unless you're proper security, meaning basically law enforcement. That means a concealed carry can be carried in here. I don't have one on me now, but I know there's others in the audience that do, because you are authorized to conceal carry in these buildings. That's why the FEC, when they have their meetings, had to get authorization from the Board of Directors to be able to display weapons when they had people come and do presentations. Those weapons are cleared before they go in the building, they're cleared after they're in the building, and the FEC even goes so far as putting a sign in the window that says, we have open firearms displayed. That's the law. And yes, I have no problem with my Board of Directors, because all six, seven, all six of them have been supporting me through this, and they've been dealing with it too since October. And new board members, we welcome them onboard. I will work with anybody and everybody. No issues.
The Elliot? You gotta grab it by the neck. Well, here we are, grabbed by the neck. And I think what, first of all, I'd like to second the motion to drop this whole thing. The other is that I think this board should take on the project to figure out how we're going to handle initiatives from now on. I really resent being used as a puppet with false accusations to get after somebody because they've got a personal vendetta against someone. And I think that, and this is not the first petition that has come across our, our patios that has been proved to be a false project. And I think that somebody needs to figure out how we vet these initiatives, or that we should know with a heading that this is something that's legitimate and not somebody's beef. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Paul Ursley, lot 193. With respect to the brandishing. With respect to the brandishing issue, not brandishing, excuse me, the clothing issue at the gun club meeting, I was there as well. I pay attention to these, not these kind of things, but I pay attention at those meetings. And I can guarantee you, I did not see anything that supported the rumor. Now, what the second part of my statement is, rumors. Today, we live in a society where a rumor is stated and then it runs wild. Once it runs wild, eventually, the truth always comes out, as we all know. The truth finally comes out, but yet, half of the people that even hear the truth will deny it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think people know what that clothing garment thing is. It was rumored that at the meeting, I took off my shirt and showed everybody my concealed carry bra. I don't have a concealed carry bra, first of all. Well, first of all, actually, I wouldn't take my shirt off either. But I don't have a concealed carry bra. And then it's been rumored that I carry my gun in my bra into these buildings. And that's natural because I don't have a concealed carry bra.
So I'm Rickard, 657, and I'd like to address a couple of things. First off, this issue about, well, she should live here full-time. That's certainly within your opinion. I don't think she has to live here full-time, but that is not a recall offense. That's something that you're feeling is known in a general election. And three, four weeks ago, I had never met Roberta. But we had an issue coming before the board, dealing with our lot. And she was the only board member that actually came out ahead of that meeting, talked to us, found out what our concerns were, what our issues were. She was the only one. And that really impressed me. So when this whole recall stuff came up and I started hearing all these rumors, we talked with Roberta, we found out it's a bunch of personal stuff, is what it sounds like to me. And I tell you how rumors get going. We support Roberta. We hosted a gathering, allowing anybody to come, ask questions of Roberta. It was a Q and A, a little happy hour thing. The rumor came around that, oh, Roberta's hosting a happy hour and she's supplying drinks to try and buy votes. That's how vicious some of these rumors are and how wrong they are. So in our opinion, my wife Patty and I, we need more people like Roberta who are willing to come up and be our board member.
I don't have anything against Roberta as a woman by any means. And this basically is now like a he said, she said kind of situation. We based our recall on information that we believe is true. Roberta is denying basically everything that we've said. And it's not a question of what the truth is because you're going to believe whatever you want to believe. And like Darlene said, it'd be nice if you all were as involved in everything that happens here at Happy Trails. That would be great.
Hi, everyone. Donna Wisdom, 379. When that petition started taking around, my car at the mail center, when that petition was put in my face and said that they're recalling Roberta, and I asked why, well, she doesn't live here. Okay? Yes, she does. 160 days a year. I'm sorry, a lot of the snowbirds don't live here 160 days a year, okay? Well, she's not a full-time resident. Well, yes, she is. She owns a lot, just like every other person who owns a lot here. And third, that she was brandishing that weapon. And I know, Roberta, she is an awesome gun person. And there is no way in God's green earth that that ever happened. Also now, I heard about the bra incident where she took her bra off. Or not her bra off, excuse me, her blouse off. Don't start that one. Took her blouse off and at the Gun Enthusiasts Club. And my husband was there. And do you think my husband, I wasn't there at that time, but do you think my husband would have not come home and told me, "Hey, I saw Roberta with her bra, her blouse off"? Yeah, no. Every person I've talked to that's in the Gun Enthusiast said, "That never happened." So the one thing that I know of for sure is that this group of people are upset because Jill is no longer here. And I'm sorry, she wasn't doing her job. The HOA company moved her, and that was their call. So I don't care. I'm sorry, that's exactly what it is. So that being said.
If I may add, please, please keep all of the questions related to our situation here. I, we're not going to bring any current employees or previous employees into this situation, into this town hall meeting. If we, we would like to proceed with questions. But if we start going down that route, unfortunately, we will have to end the meeting. If we, I would like to give the opportunity for anyone else that has questions to ask questions. We will proceed here quickly so that we can have lunch at some point in time today.
Good morning. My name is Vern Elvis. I'm from Canada, proud Canadian, and very proud to be a member of Happy Trails, where we've been renting successfully in this wonderful community for eight or nine years. It's a wonderful place. It's a place, however, that is fraught with those that love rumors. And what we're seeing here today is a prime example of huge cost, huge personal tragedy, if you like, because those that are perpetrating the rumors do not want the facts to get in the way of a good story. And isn't that what we've heard in Happy Trails? How many rumors have I heard over the years about people, about things, about favoritism, about you name it? And it's just about always false. My point here today is, those of you who are behind this petition, you know who you are. You've heard today, the results of people's points of view. And it is time for you folks to do the right thing. And the right thing would be to stand up and tell us who you are and also withdraw petition. Life is very short, and life is very precious. And you're putting extreme pressure, those of you who love the rumor mills. You're putting extreme pressure on those that don't deserve it. And we have heard nothing but facts today that support our board member who's going through a difficult time here with all of this, thanks to those of you who came up with this idea and those of you who decided to support it with your signatures. Thank you.
Ron Byer, 2251. If recalled, can Roberta run again?
I can't hear you, sir. I'm sorry.
I said, if recalled, can Roberta run again?
Not till the end of my term, which means I would have to not be able to, I would not do anything this year, obviously, which we're done with the election, but I could run again in 2024. But here's what I'm going to tell you. This follows you. This follows you. And I've spent a long time, 36 years, developing my reputation in the military that I truly do not like it being spit on now.
Why would you?
Debbie Cheek, lot 219. I have one question, and I think I know the answer to one of it. And I believe that everybody has a right to privacy. So I'm not asking who signed the petition. But I'd like to read the petition since it wasn't presented to me.
As I understand it, the only thing the petition says is recall of Roberta Ernest due to violation of conduct, code of conduct.
Correct. That is the only statement on the petition.
I'm Sue Deal, lot 1578. And I've been listening to this, which is wonderful to hear and wonderful to see. I've been in Happy Trails for 20 years. And all I want to say, okay, I'll eat the mic if that will help, is more than anything else in this, and the he said, she said, and the rumor thing, we all voted for our board. We vote for our board members, those of us who care enough to be involved. I resent anything that capriciously says that my vote shouldn't count. Sound like the government, it really does. But it does. Once you vote a member in, they deserve our loyalty.
Oh, yeah. Lawrence Mayfield, 1777. I'm just kind of going back to when everything started, when Sharon got up there and she went over four different points. I know the recall said that, just to recall, Roberta. And then she brought up the code of conduct, and then the private meeting with the board, and not living here 12 for 12 full-time. My question really, and whether Sharon addresses it or somebody else that is on the recall, is what of those four things have not been answered? And with the code of conduct, what specifically in the code of conduct did Roberta violate? And since she doesn't have to live here, you know, for 12 months, and some people on other committees have spoke against what the second point was, and the only one that is valid would be the four of you in the quorum. But then again, it goes back to where are the other three up here being recalled? So the only one really is the code of conduct, which I haven't heard specifics of what you violated on the code of conduct, and I would be interested in that.
So would I.
We have time for one more question, Lauren.
Lauren Hanson, lot 556. In case people don't know, not only do the Board of Directors sign a code of conduct, but also all committee members sign code of conduct. In my seven and a half years on the board, I'm surprised this has gotten to this particular level. In my seven and a half years on the board here, we had several times that there were violations of code of conduct. And those were always handled in-house through the board, working, developing a corrective action. I'm not so sure that this is the case at this particular point. So I'm not sure why this has gotten to this particular point. Thank you.
Again, I thank you all. My favorite president, President Lincoln, who did walking, management by walking around, spotted a guy and said, "You know, I don't like that guy very much. I need to get to know him better." So for those of you that may not still support me because you don't know me, come get to know me. I will engage in an adult conversation with you. I will hear your side. I'd like you to hear my side. It's about being adults. In a community where we are 60-plus in age, we should be relishing in our children's accomplishments, sharing our grandchildren's events, and then helping each other with our disabilities and our health, not acting like we're in high school. I ask you to please vote no against my removal, and I will continue working with the other six board members in making this a viable, happy community. Thank you.
Before we all run off, I just want to add one thing. You, the ballot will be sent out via mail today. You will find two ballots that are going out. Pink ballot will be held for the recall ballot. It will state, "Please place your vote for one of the following. Yes, I vote for the removal of Roberta Ernest from the Board of Directors. Or no, I vote against the removal of Roberta Ernest for the Board of Directors." This ballot is for recall. You will also see an annual ballot that you have probably already received in the mailbox. If not, please come by the office. You can find both ballots in the main office, library area. We can provide that for you. Please return this ballot to the ballot box that is labeled recall ballot, or it can be mailed back to the association at 17200. Just to state, there are two ballots floating around, one for annual meeting, one for recall. It will proceed at this point in time. We will hold the special meeting on February 8th at 2:00 p.m. in the courtyard. I see some hands. We have some questions. What's that? There will be a letter that states the retention and removal of the Board of Directors, would be the letter that I started reading off to you. It will not have this specification that goes into this for the recall. It states, "As a result of petition submitted to the association on January 9th, 2023, the association, on behalf of the members, has called a special meeting to vote on the issue of removing the current director, Roberta Ernest, from the Board of Directors." That is the statement that will be mailed to you in the ballot. So please fill out the ballot and bring it back to the mail or into our main office, okay? Yes, ma'am.
So if they were to withdraw it, they can't withdraw it?
At this point in time, no. We will be proceeding with the ballot. And I believe we said who is counting the ballots? You got the answer there? Okay, wonderful. Yes, ma'am. We will have to follow state statutes at this point in time and proceed with what is happening. So thank you all for coming. Wish you a wonderful day.